Hearing none, let's go, let's move on to item three, an improvement, it's three dot one, February twenty one, twenty twenty three, budget workshop meeting, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, any comments, questions, changes, et cetera? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Three dot one, three dot two, February second, twenty twenty three, public hearing, is there a motion? Under second.
Second.
Any further comments, questions, changes, et cetera? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Three dot three, the February third, twenty twenty three, budget workshop meeting, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, any further comments, questions, changes? Hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Item four, Mary Jane, remotely today, how are you?
Good afternoon. Are you guys ready?
We're ready.
All right, let's start with revenues. So as of the end of January, we are just shy of sixty percent through the year. On our revenues, we are ninety three point two percent collected compared to ninety percent from last year. All of our departments seem to do, be doing well. I'd just like to note that in the selectments line, we do have the money from the National Opioid Settlement. We will be using that money for prevention and recovery through Youth and Family Services. So that money will be moved out at such a point, we're ready to use that. Other than that, Park and Rec is really the only department that is a little low at this point, still trying to recover from the use of the community center. Any questions on revenue?
Aye. Just a quick note, the opioid settlement money is about ninety thousand, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
And then when we talk about parking rec, revenues being down, it's, you know, room rental, you know, the church is no longer using the facility every Sunday morning. But program revenues have come, come back strongly as we, as we discussed in our budget workshops.
Correct, that's allocated in the separate fund.
Yep. Okay.
I'll move on to expenditures. Go ahead.
Are the opioid funds strictly for prevention or mental health or?
Yeah.
That's not.
Not to be used for general life fund purposes?
No, but I mean, I just think in a park and rec, if there was any programs that.
We'll go, we'll go back and take a look at the allowable uses.
Yeah.
See if we can stretch.
Program or something, I don't know if there was a way. Yeah, as long as it gets used properly, it's fine, you know, considering parking records down, I thought it might be a way to initiate some programs.
Got to help that. We'll take a look at the allowable uses. It was, as I recall, it was somewhat restrictive. And this was the settlement that the Attorney General participated in with attorneys, attorneys general, is that how you say? Thank you, Attorney General, attorneys general across the country, so. And there may be more coming, you still, is it the Sacre family? Purdue Sacre family, that's the one that still hasn't been settled. And we are, we'll be a beneficent, we'll be a beneficiary, we'll be a beneficiary of that as well. So, all right, anything further on revenues? Shall we go to expenses?
Of course, so at the end of January, we are just shy of sixty percent spent, pretty much right where we should be at this point in the year. A couple of things I just wanted to note that the fire department would be at sixty three percent without their encumbrances. And Public Works would be only at fifty two percent without their encumbrances. Those departments seem to show a lot more usage because of the purchase orders they have outstanding. Otherwise, I will note that economic development looks overdrawn at the moment because it is. That's because we are waiting for funds to come in from Madison to cover the half of cost of Sherry's position.
Any, any questions on expenses?
We're recording.
Well, and this is the second time, this is the second time you've heard my, my story, so. Usually I go to you first and then the Board of Finance, it was the other way around this.
Okay. I'm not sure anybody has, you know, looked at the special fund warrants and that. We had some questions on that, the Board of Finance meeting, and medical, MJ?
On medical side, on January was just about right on target for the budget at one million oh one six. We are still shy as, as we have been on catastrophic claims. We have only used six point three percent of our coverage at this point, but we did unfortunately increase from seven to ten members in the month of January, hitting that seventy five thousand dollar limit. I am showing a projected surplus of about seven hundred and fifty thousand in there, but that number has been coming down as our employees are reaching their deductible and the town is beginning to cover additional services.
Thanks MJ, I see we're, you know, we're still chasing the stop loss. The last few months of the year, the ones where we traditionally see the significant increase in the percentage of the ISL premium that we actually are recovering. And how many cases, ten, so there's ten now over the seventy five thousand threshold, right?
Correct, like I said, they're increasing by three in the month of January alone.
MJ, this may be a precursor to discussions over the next month when we anticipate getting the results of our audit, I think is March, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, I just met with the auditing team today and I'm expecting my final draft tomorrow. We are still on track to report in March.
Excellent. At that point, would we, I would think we'd want to start to talk about where fund balance is going to fall? And what opportunities may present themselves in regards to both the unassigned fund balance as well as the medical benefits fund balance? And potentially using additional funds beyond the cushion that has been recommended to us by our consultants to further prop up OPEB? Have you had any discussions with the auditing firm on that?
Well, there, we would have already moved money from unassigned as of June thirty already, but if you remember correctly, we did not have a large surplus this year in, in the unassigned unless the auditors have found anything. As far as the medical funds, you know, that decision is ours, the, our, our auditors, you know, do not make any recommendations for such. So we can certainly look at those numbers and anything we would do would be in the current year.
So the fund balance as of six thirty twenty twenty two is going to withstand the audit, you're pretty confident that's the real number?
You mean, are we talking the overall audit or are we talking medical?
The, the fund balance of six thirty twenty twenty two on medical, that four million seven hundred and forty five thousand, that's, that's going to survive the audit report?
I would expect so, yes.
Okay.
What, what was the number then June that we didn't hit?
It just wasn't in excess of the two or three months, depending on which, which, which recommendation.
What was that delta?
That delta is, we're, we're about, what is it? One point two, one point three per month, so.
Let's just. You know, if we, if we had a quote unquote good year. You know, if there was an opportunity for catch up, I would have just waited.
So I, I just want to note that my, my comment about not having a large surplus was the general fund overall, not the medical fund.
Right. Anything further? Anything else MJ?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, Fire Chief, Charles Hershaw. Oh, he's still nimble on your feet, I like that, I like that.
Talking my bike ride time.
Five dot one, this is a consider take possible action on additional amount for the generator at the community center. I'll just tee this up a little bit, as you may recall, when we approved in our January, I think our second meeting in January. We were, we knew that prevailing wage had not been considered, which is required under the state contract over a hundred thousand dollars. So we went back to Kinsley, we went back a couple of times, there were some question and Pete, Pete verified that it would have been nice to waive the performance bond requirement, which adds to the cost. But in fact, we are not, that's against purchasing policy, so we did not do that. So we had approved at a twenty percent increase over the original price of a hundred thirty two thousand, six hundred and eighty nine dollars and ninety nine cents. The twenty percent uptick that we had anticipated is falling short, that was one fifty nine, two seventy seven, ninety eight. And then the new number provided by our, oh, see, which source, well.
Sourcewell.
Sourcewell, right.
Is one seventy one, two ninety three, sixty seven, that was hot off the press last night.
And what's? And it is still less than what we get allocated originally for ARPA funds. Which was two hundred and two thousand, eight hundred and fifty. So we're still.
Correct, two hundred and two.
Still in better shape than we thought.
So it's one sixty three plus the performance bond.
Well, no, not the performance bond, there's a real, the new number that we have just, just came through to me today is one seventy one. Yeah, one seventy one, two ninety three, sixty seven.
So lead time is sixty months.
I know.
Five years.
Tells you about the shape of American manufacturing, doesn't it?
Sixty eight weeks, sixty eight weeks, not, not months.
Still.
Still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I have a question, as I see Mr. Gurnam looking on virtually here, just out of curiosity. How loud is this thing, is anybody?
It's hospital quiet.
Seriously?
Right.
That's how they describe it.
Why don't we have one of those at the other location?
That's not a generator. That's not a generator, that's an XH fat, your generator is hospital standard also.
So this is not going to be violating any noise?
No.
And it's running, which is going to be only in an emergency, I mean, you could make arguments under the.
Well, we, we would not be required to adhere to.
In an emergency.
Right, but regardless, it's, this hospital, yeah, right.
Okey dokey. All right, so is there a motion to increase the award to cover the difference between the one sixty nine, two seventy seven, ninety eight versus one seventy one, two ninety three, sixty seven?
Might get another phone call tomorrow.
In a second.
Second.
Any further comments or questions? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Get on the bike, would you? All right. Item six, Cliff Gurnam, Board of Head, Director of Operations, you've got a full plate here today, Cliff.
Yes, we do.
Item one, discuss and take possible action to award bid number seven dash twenty two, twenty three, the Baldwin Kitchen renovation, floor is yours.
Very good, thank you, so we went out to bid for the Baldwin Kitchen renovation project. We had four bidders submit bids for the project, which was great to see. We reviewed those bids, both the Standing Building Committee and our engineer and architect of record, who's Antonazi Associates. Antonazi Associates also did a scope review with the lowest bidder. And upon completion of that, they recommended awarding the bid to Orlando Anulian Sons out of Manchester. We've used them on multiple projects before, we've had great success, so I highly recommend that we award the, the project to them in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety eight thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Excellent, all right, is there, for discussion purposes, there a motion?
Awesome, yeah, I'll second.
Yeah, okay, any comments or questions? A lot of kitchen.
Yeah.
Big kitchen, industrial kitchen. Cliff, you mentioned that this project is funded through the bond referendum for twenty two, twenty three, that had an approximate balance of three point four. What other projects are part of that three point four, because it was more than just this project, if I'm not mistaken?
Correct, I think a million and a half was labeled for this project. I don't have those numbers in front of me, I'd have to look, look them up and get back to you, unless Mary Jane has those. I, I can see she's still online with us, I don't know if she has or not.
I don't have them at my fingertips, but if you want the answer, I can pull it up.
So Cliff, so this, this says the kitchen, is this just the kitchen work area or is it also the service area and sort of the, the area where the students would be walking through? In other words, tiled and the counters that they'd be working, walking through and serving, you know, those, both, both sides?
Correct, it's a, basically a complete gut from where you're saying the service line, all the way into the kitchen, all the main prep areas, all that gets redone, including the walk-in refrigerators, all the storage areas. Most of the equipment we've already bought, or a lot of the equipment we've already bought, and it's on site already because of the lead times. So this is more constructions, we're moving walls around, creating additional bathroom, prep sinks, all that, proper ventilation. So it's really a complete overhaul of the entire kitchen and serving area itself.
But as I recall, we've, as you said, there's already equipment on hand that has been purchased over the last, over the last year, really, less than a year. We started moving on this particularly to get supply chain concerns out of the way, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Yep. Great. Anything further, any other questions?
I have that answer for you, Matt.
Yes, thank you.
I have the answer for you on the bond authorization. So it's made up of a few projects, we have the Guilford High School replacement of tennis courts, seven hundred and twenty six thousand. The kitchen renovations that we're discussing, just shy of one point five million. Cox Library renovations at eighty thousand. The Guilford Lakes District Playground Replacement, three hundred and nineteen thousand, five ninety five New England Road renovation of nine hundred and seventy five thousand. District wide design for future projects, two hundred and twenty one thousand. Makes up the bond authorization.
Any final questions on them?
So with one point five available for the Baldwin Kitchen, and this is one point two, are you comfortable with what you've bought so far and whatever else is needed?
Yes, we aren't anticipating having to use too much of the contingency. We've tried to do as much homework as we could ahead of time, so hopefully we don't really have any surprises, yep.
Anything else? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Six dot two, discuss and take possible action on a recommendation from the Standing Building Committee to award the Cox Building System controls upgrades to Johnson Controls.
Cliff, so this is the last portion over at Cox, as far as the control system that needs to be upgraded. We didn't do it over the summer because that portion of the system was running, but we are looking to drive it to get it done now before the next cooling season, so. We had JCI come in and look at the remaining equipment that was interconnected to the cooling pumps, the cooling tower, and then the heat exchangers, most of that equipment is from the nineties and a lot of these controllers are actually no longer really serviceable. So it's in our best interest to try to update this now while we can. So JCI was able to put together a proposal for us. I took it to Standing Building Committee, they reviewed it and are recommending that we award the work to Johnson Controls the amount of forty seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety two dollars.
Great, thanks Cliff. And just as, because I've, because I've been looking at Johnson Controls invoices since the nineties. The energy performance contract, did it contemplate that these cooling controls would need to be done once we replace the systems?
Correct, so it didn't want to do it before we replaced the cooling tower and everything else. So it wasn't integrated into the energy performance contract itself, there was a fine line determining when to do which controls. So it was in our best interest to do this piece when we actually did the HVAC work itself. If that makes sense.
It does. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Second.
Further comments or questions for Cliff? No. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Six dot three, consider and take possible action on a recommendation from the Standing Building Committee to award the Cox and Lakes cell phone repeater systems to CDWG. Cliff?
So this is a concern throughout the district, not just these two buildings, but this is the two buildings where we have the least amount of cell phone coverage, so it's the two schools we're going to be starting with. It's been brought up, it's a security slash safety hazard, not just for our staff, but as well as police and fire, because there is no service, especially at Cox. Once you get into the building to be able to use your cell phone to call out if there's an emergency. So we are looking at installing repeater, cell phone repeaters within the school itself to broadcast service throughout the majority of the school. So we're starting at Cox and Guilford Lakes and we're looking at purchasing the equipment and the installation through the PEPM bid contract. This has been looked at and reviewed by the Standing Building Committee and our IT department, so everybody's on board with this at this point in time. So we're recommending moving forward and awarding the work to CDWG in the amount of ninety four thousand, eight hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighty cents.
Is there a specific reason why the cell phones don't work, I know in lakes in particular.
Yeah, it's a follow up to that, I'll do it, is there a motion?
I would make.
There are, there are pockets in this town that have distinctly poor cell phone coverage, in fact, I had a conversation with a representative from T-Mobile this morning. One of the areas that you might be surprised at is the whole station's head, that end of town is awful coverage. And there's actually been a couple of residents who've reached out. I've worked with the Siting Council at different times, so we can get reports relative to the strength and we have reports based on, on the relative cell, the strength of cell coverage in various parts of the community. The, the challenge is nobody has the authority to force the carriers to upgrade their capacity. Self wireless carriers are not regulated like, like Frontier is. So it's, that's all a business case for those folks. So I actually, Representative from T-Mobile was going to take a look and see what they had out in some of these areas of town and see whether, because they're in the middle of doing some upgrades to some of the towers in terms of capacity, so it's not an unknown problem, but it's a classic capitalistic approach. Where their return is, is best, they will, they will put the resources.
I was just, I know from personal experience at lakes. Times don't work in lakes and I always thought that was strange, I would have thought that was a fairly strong area.
And there's.
Depends where the towers are, think about, there's no buildings or towers.
Right, so. And repeaters are designed to strengthen the signal that they will out and pull it back in. Too many years, too many years in the technology business. Yeah, too, too natural, and also it's relatively fresh, I've recently had a conversation with the residents, so. All right, so we have a motion, in a second.
What is the PEPM bid contract?
I just know it's one of the common bids that the town has used to purchase products and equipment off of in the past, I don't know, I don't know what it stands for.
That we've, we've utilized for years, we're members of, we've utilized it when it's appropriate. It's not dissimilar to some of the buying things we do through CCM or Hartford, the Greater Hartford Regional Council of Governments. Their consortium bid opportunities, so, but that they, these have already been vetted and bid out by these respective organizations.
Separate question, but I'm bidding, actually, it pertains to the item before with Johnson Controls. I mean, they, they have a number of contracts with us. Does the Standing Building Committee or are we responsible or Board of Finance for looking at the accumulated contracts within they've entered?
The reason Johnson Controls is utilized is because we, it's Johnson Controls overall management system that they interface with, so this is considered proprietary.
No, I appreciate that and I know, you know, we sort of, this wasn't picking on that particular, but that particular name pops up often. I, it just got me thinking about what is the total amount of all the contracts we have with particular vendors?
Now MJ could give you a number on the energy performance contract, it was what, about nine million dollars with, with Johnson Controls between the equipment and all of the.
That doesn't commit any extra parameters as far as bidding and stuff like that. Well, we're under control and all of that.
I would think so, with Johnson Controls, I'm comfortable because it's a proprietary operating system that they use for.
Yeah, I wasn't picking on them, I was just thinking about, you know, we look at some individual things sometimes and, you know, they're all logical and we vote on them and everything. When you look at the whole thing, I mean, that particular, when you said it was nine million dollars, well, that would take, you know, an extra set of.
It did, but it took us a long time to, to, to complete that energy. Now, there, there are other vendors for whom we waive bidding because they're incumbent providers.
State bids.
Or state bids, et cetera, so.
Well, that's what I got thinking about because you know, like I said, individually, they all make sense and everything, but if you look at them cumulatively, are we covered, are we dotted all over eyes? Making sure we're doing everything right.
I'm, I'm comfortable that the, the bid, the purchasing policies are being adhered to, but I think there was no better evidence of it than the issue with the generator, you know, they had said, well, here's a price, if you, if we don't have to post a performance bond. No, Pete says we post performance bonds on projects like this, so I'm, I'm, Charlie, again, it's always an opportunity for things to slip through the cracks, but I'm comfortable.
Look at it, that's all.
Add one more question. Sure. So Cliff, I suspect I know the answer to this. Lakes is fourteen thousand dollars more, is that just because it's a more sprawling building?
Yeah, it's actually, I think, an extra ten thousand square feet over the size of Cox, so it's going to be a little more expensive, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything further? Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Six dot, we're discussing take possible action on a recommendation from the Standing Building Committee to award the purchase of door locks from BMP Construction.
So this is the last school in the series of schools where we've been updating the door lock systems. So at the high school, as we know, it's a little bit of a newer school. However, we wanted to give the occupants the same ability to lock their classroom doors if they're not on a pod, so if they're directly connected to a, a general hallway, to be able to lock their doors from the inside with a quick flip of a toggle switch. So we did a evaluation of which doors needed that throughout the high school and we brought that proposal back to the Standing Building Committee for their review, they've since reviewed that and made the recommendation to award this under the, award this to BMP Construction under the EZIQC construction bid in the amount of twenty eight thousand, three hundred and four dollars and eighty four cents.
Great, is there a motion? And a second.
Second.
Comments or questions, sir?
Disappointing that we're modifying such a new building. But.
Actually. What is it, seven years old now?
Seven years old, I think.
It's still new.
And, and that, that, that safety area has, has been evolving just a lot more than some of the other.
That's what I say.
Some of the other functions.
I, I support it, it just.
It's amazing that we have to invest in it.
You're right.
I agree.
I mean, the good news is we're not purchasing all new doors, we can modify the existing door itself to take the new hardware. Unlike the other schools where we actually had to buy a whole new door in order to modify or add the hardware to it, so this is a lot less expensive than. this is a lot less expensive than the, the prior projects.
Yeah, I mean, the high school must have had some security precautions and lockdown capability.
Cliff, you wanna talk to what the high school had prior to this?
So, so again, most of the classrooms are in pods uh designed with uh fire doors or security doors that will close during a lockdown, which gives them a secondary barrier uh from the hallway, so they have the fire doors, and then they have their regular classroom doors, that both uh are locked and closed during a lockdown, so there are some rooms, uh whether it's a the uh couple of the art rooms or machine rooms, uh robotics room, things like that, that are open to the general spaces and don't have that secondary pod construction. Um, so we want them to have that ability to lock the door that much quicker versus uh having to use a key to, to lock their doors, so. Um, but again, the high school is designed with most of the same lockdown features that the district has uh throughout with uh lockdown buttons and, and things of that nature, and um, we've moved forward with the Baldwin Project and their enhancements, um, and the testing of that new system, which has worked out really well, uh which we hope to spread throughout the rest of the district. Uh, in the next, you know, couple of months, we'll probably be talking further about those enhancements.
Thank you. Anything further? We have a motion on the table, uh, let me try my mind, it's all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously, uh, six dot five, consider and take possible action on a recommendation from the standing building committee to award the purchase of bookcases for the Cox Media Center to Red Thread.
Oh, this is uh part one of a couple of different uh pieces, uh we're presently looking at just purchasing the perimeter bookcases, uh if you've been in Cox, uh you understand it's an open format, and they use the bookcases to kind of create the library setting. Uh, so those bookcases, which are I'm guessing somewhere between twenty-five to thirty years old, have uh exceeded our life expectancy and are, are starting to come apart. Uh, we're looking at purchasing those, our board of ed staff will be able to disassemble remove the old ones, and then reassemble the new ones in place, uh we'll have a company come move all the books in and out as needed. Uh, we're looking at purchasing this uh off a state contract as well. Uh, and awarded to Red Thread from East Hartford. The project itself has been reviewed by the standing building committee and recommended to move forward in the amount of forty-eight thousand eight hundred five dollars and one cent.
Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second, comments or questions? Or none, let me try your mind, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Cliff, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too. Okay, item seven, discuss and take possible action to appropriate the American Rescue Plan funds for Great Hill Cottage's affordable housing project. And secondarily, to have a preliminary discussion on the establishment of an affordable house, housing trust fund, which may take a completely separate meeting to do, I just wanted to introduce the concept. Um, just a little bit, Chris, come on up. Um, a little bit of background, I think we're all familiar with Chris and the, the, the project, the wonderful project uh up off of uh uh just north of the highway, uh, State Street, um, the Great Hill Cottage Community, all affordable housing. Um, when this project was originally approved, uh, the fire department gave the blessing to utilize uh a pond that was on the property for fire suppression, um, however, uh after uh the drought this past summer, uh for uh the department has suggested that that's not, is no longer acceptable. So uh what is needed at this point, because there's no water source, Connecticut Water doesn't come up, uh, up State Street at this point. Um, that uh they put in a fire tank, which is traditional for neighborhoods where there are deficiencies in terms of uh fire suppression, there are there are water tanks around in, in various places around town, and if Charlie was here, he could, he could probably list them off from, from memory. So um a couple of things here, one, uh, the, this is putting the entire development at risk in terms of funding, uh, and potentially, uh, you know, it potentially impacting the affordable nature of uh these, these units. Um, secondly, um, in our uh housing uh goals, you know, as Y'all called, we submitted an affordable housing um, um, report and set of guidelines and recommendations. Uh, and um, in those goals, at your leisure, uh you'll see that um one of the things that we committed to was assisting in some kind of financial form, uh not dissimilar to what we did with the project over um, over at driveway uh and, and, and across from the uh Whitfield House, uh that, uh, which made Works New Horizons, where we actually gave them the land to, to, to do that project. So uh, I, I've been having some conversations with Chris, uh, I've talked with our town planner Jamie Stein, and she quickly pointed out that this is wholly consistent with uh our plan. Um, we still have uh a couple of million dollars worth of American Rescue Plan funds. And this is a nonprofit organization, uh, and all, how many units, is it gonna be ten now?
Nine.
Nine units.
Yeah.
All of which will be affordable, um, the, the first two are already, um, already populated, and as you might recall, we had the opportunity to put in place a tax evasion program for affordable home ownership. Uh, that first application has been submitted, um, and uh is about to be uh, uh, fully processed, once we get the the final uh blessing from legal beagles, so um Chris, is there anything you wanna?
No, I think you pretty pretty much covered it, I, I think the size of the tank is thirty thousand gallons, which is kind of the standard for this type of development, um. It's massive, it's fifty-five feet long and ten feet in diameter, so that's
Is the city, doesn't the city where you go to the senior thing just south of the highway?
It does, because it stops just south.
When do you put red lines from there?
We uh, we investigated extending the line up to our property.
Used to be a thousand a foot, how much is it now?
It's more than that, so it's probably uh, it's close to um a thousand, a thousand feet, but that's assuming the water company would allow us to just bring the water up and put a fi- put a hydrant at our property.
Well, I guess this seems a little bit, not stopgap, but it is stopgap, I mean, tanks, well, I got a life span of fifteen years, maybe twenty years.
Yeah.
You know, we're gonna spend money, if money's available. I would think pursuing that, you know. If you've already pursued it, I, I mean, in micromanagement, but it just, I know tanks are stopgap, so.
We li- we did look into it, and I think that um, the other thing is that in order to um, in order to do that, we have to go it's, it would extend the uh, it would extend the length of the project. Um, we're hoping to have the units completed and ready for occupancy in May. Um, and we just got, I mean, not just, but just after the drought of the summer, the fire department sort of indicated that they weren't interested in using the pond.
That's funny, the language you use is that they were comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, this is, are they saying no CO without, I mean, they could run a line from fire hydrant at the senior play, I mean, that, you know. It didn't seem like it would stop the opening or CO.
This is the recommendation of the fire department to put a tank in. Um, but
Would they prefer?
No, in terms of response time, the tank is the uh, is, is the most efficient way of fighting the fire immediately. If that tank were to run dry, because all eleven of them, or all nine of them.
If there was a hydrant, they would prefer a tank to a hydrant on the property?
No, they would, they would prefer a, a hydrant. The time to get that permitted, to get it approved by the Connecticut Water, that, you know, Connecticut Water Company. And the original prices were not, because Chris originally priced us out a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and it was, it was a little worth the two hundred thousand dollars, so.
Two hundred now.
For the hy-
Just a hy-
Yeah.
Two hundred now.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know, it seems to me that that would be a more efficient long-term investment, but.
Well, I'll tell you what, um, Chris, if you don't mind waiting another couple of weeks on this, um.
No, I haven't, I'm trying to hold it up, but it just, you know, you're at two hundred now, even if it costs two fifty, or you know, whatever, it just, it's a permanent fix that would probably benefit other people besides.
So what are the buildings, what are the homes using now for water, individual wells, or is there like a single well?
There'll be, uh, there'll be some shared well, so there, for, for the seven homes in the back, we're looking at three wells that serve the seven homes.
Sounds like you even got another fix in. I don't know, I, I don't get to run the bikes, it's not, you know, it's a year, it's a pri- it's a year process, no question, even if you have to blast leg. I'd look, didn't notice, but uh you know, you're already at a couple hundred thousand dollars for a stopgap, plus you got a, a, a well you gotta build, that, you know, that's problematic onto itself.
Maybe we can put it under the new sidewalk, it's gonna go onto the road there.
Now you're, yeah. I mean, it just, I, I don't like, you know, th- this is a stopgap. And it just seems to me, I always thought that we ran the water to the senior place, it just isn't that far. And it's a, it's a long-term permanent fix, I mean, and you were talking
Hold you up, slick.
No, I would, I honestly, I would prefer a hydrant, um, I, I thought this was the most cost-effective way.
In the short term, but it also makes a point, if you spend this now, and then you gotta do it again in even twenty years. Of course, that's offset by
Wells alone, or only a ten or fifteen year
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't, so that, that cost would not, um, would, would just bring a hydrant to the end.
I know, but you know, when your well goes bad, the water's there, you don't have to reinvent the wheel again.
I see what you're saying, yeah. Well.
Somebody said water shoots and it looked into it.
If, if we make people more com- more comfortable, I can, uh, with Chris, we can reach out to the water company yet again. Uh, the former uh Vice President of Service Delivery, who has been a, a, a good friend to Guilford, is now the President of Connecticut Water Company, so we can
It's a perfect opportunity for our, I mean, that would, you know, that's a good use for our, for building permanent infrastructure.
Absolutely.
Oh, so you're, you're suggesting using the ARPA funds to extend the water line, you know, okay, alright.
What would that do in terms of completion of the project CO with fire department, we could have a conversation with the fire department.
Temporarily, I mean, it's not that far from using the hydrant that's existing down by the seniors if they had a crisis.
Yeah, it's outside of a thousand-foot radius that they, that they like, but could they do it, I'm sure they could.
They used to put a pump truck out.
It also came up in the context of, really, it was a little bit of a historic drought there last year. I mean, in previous years, this might not have even presented itself. So it's still a good answer, hydrant is a good answer for that location, but hopefully, the way the weather's been, maybe the pond is re you know, constituted, at least in terms of a, a, a short term.
Yeah, I mean, it's just not that far, I've seen lines longer than that, that's, you know, if you had the emergency, you know, I don't want you to get a CO and have an emergency and jeopardize people's lives, because, you know, water is literally down the street, I mean. Put a pump truck out.
All right, so uh, Chris, you and I will get put our heads together, uh, and
I think it's
Just, just to get some ballparks, and one of the things that scares that guy to me, for those who recall, that when we had uh preliminary pricing to extend water uh to uh Mulberry Point, um, the pricing, the advanced pricing we got from an engineering firm as well as a water company was about fifty percent short of what it eventually wound up becoming, so, uh, you know.
It depends on ledge. I mean, Mulberry had railroad tracks, you know, wet, wetlands, rivers.
Yeah, but these were, these were experts who gave us numbers that we were not to bid with.
Yeah, you know, me with exceptions and coming back. But this one here just seems such a clear path. And it's not that far, I mean, it's longer than the width of the highway.
But I think what you heard, what you heard is that there's a willingness to use ARPA funds for this, because it, it is infrastructure kind of related.
And, and that helps, definitely helps us, at least. Completion of the project, so.
I think you'd be And then the other conversation
Even if it costs ARPA funds, which, you know, this is a great use of our fund for infrastructure like that.
And then, and then the other conversations with the fire department, will, will they sign off on COs, um knowing that this is not, potentially not gonna happen for a year, or whatever. Uh, because I suspect they're any wetlands you gonna go through, probably not from that.
Not just for a hydrant, no.
Well, just coming up uh roadway, uh, probably not, right? Because there are certain times of year where you can't disturb certain parts of the environment.
Well, that's going back a ways there.
Yes, it is.
Like gas running up.
Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for the detour, but this is better for everybody.
Um, I think maybe we will dispense with uh, uh, a larger discussion on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but just take a look at, um, you know, some of the things in, in our Affordable Housing Plan, and establishing a trust fund with potentially some ARPA funds.
What do you envision, something like the land?
No, no, a fund, a, a fund that developers can tap into, to make uh it more powerful to do affordable housing. One of the things that you're gonna, you may have seen or will see uh in the rewrite uh is uh a consideration for inclusionary zoning, and Sandy can talk about this at greater depth than I can. But, um, and inclusionary zoning would require uh on developments over a certain size to have a affordable housing set aside, and that's contemplated in uh, in our Affordable Housing Plan as well. Um, and the set thresholds wherever you want, but a developer would have the ability to opt out. And you know this phrase, fee in lieu of, we've done that for uh open space set asides, so.
Are you saying the fund would be available as a funding source?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and some pays fee in lieu of that would be used to develop others, if, if the affordable if their project, if it didn't make sense, if the developer's project was so small that in order for them to make some units affordable, they can't, they can't afford to do it, then they pay the fee in lieu of so that another developer, or perhaps them, the, the same person, can develop some other affordable housing in, in another manner. Um, so you need, the town needs to have the ability to keep the money somewhere, um. So this, that's why this needs to be established, whether it's gonna help developers build affordable, or help us take the fee in lieu of, and we figure out how to, how to use it for affordable.
Interesting concept, I mean, you know. In general, philosophically, it makes some sense, I'd be interested to hear the mechanics.
Devils in the deep.
Example is the um condominiums that are being built on Whitfield Street right now, Eagles View. Um, there's not enough of them, and they're going at such a high rate that, that the developer chose to make some affordable, it, it, even eighty percent of what they're going for, I mean, it just, it would be, in that sense, the fee in lieu would work, be a better solution.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that part, like I said, philosophically, you know, I, it's, it sounds like a plan, but you'd have to, I'd have to, and can't accept it.
Right, and, and what's gonna happen is, as this rolls through, as we roll this through planning and zoning, because the uh, the rewrite is gonna be, I think, presented by, for, for public availability on March tenth. And it's thirty-five days from that, and it goes into effect, so that is the subject of significant discussion between uh town planning, the uh Affordable Housing Working Group, uh, and planning and zoning themselves, uh, as to how this is gonna shake out in terms of the uh, the set size, or the inclusionary mandatory. You know, the, the, the numbers have been bouncing all over the place, you know, if it's thirty units or more, uh, then uh inclusionary zoning would kick in. Uh, should it be applicable to all areas of, of development? Well, no, there's some discussion that maybe it's through one corridor, uh, because it's access to transit, it's access to, to resources, as opposed to doing, you know, uh, doing affordable housing in, in North Guilford, uh, which
Th- th- these are really small steps, it sounds, you know, if you haven't been following it as closely, it sounds like throwing a lot at you, but these are small steps, and it's a perfect opportunity with the zoning rewrite to get some of the language in there, and then go from there. So it may sound like a, you know, out of the blue, but it's not really, and we've been studying a lot of other towns that have done some of this already.
So what do we do for homework, what's what should we research on our own, or, or how, how can I become better educated?
Talk directly to Jamie, because there's a lot of homework, you don't have to re, re-homework the homework, I mean, there's, she can direct you
Okay.
to things to look at.
Alright.
Including some of the, including some of the documents that are currently being contemplated by planning and zoning, and they need to make a decision on, these are prepared by Glenn Schaller, our uh consultant that uh we engaged over the past three years to do the zoning rewrite. Um, he's got some, an extra, you gotta, you gotta see something, a byproduct of his on the next agenda item. Um, but Jamie, a, a, a quick reach out to Jamie for relevant documents.
It's, it's even, I mean, I'd rather have you hear it from her than from me, because I sound like I know what I'm talking about, but she really doesn't. I know what I'm talking about to this level, but she really can do a deep dive for you.
Alright, good.
Interesting.
Okay, um, item eight, discuss and take possible action to set a public hearing date for an ordinance change related to cannabis. I, 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 the language here is, was a little, a bit of an overreach, uh, we don't have an ordinance ready to set for, and I would not wanna set one for uh, and set a date without, without a document. I forward, I forwarded along, yeah, you got to forward along some things, uh, that we need to, uh, you know, and I think we had talked about, we needed to make some decision in support. You know, if we're gonna take the ordinance, repeal the ordinance and back it down, we're gonna allow it. Um, and there are some decision points that we have to make. Uh, and I think I shared with you, uh, the materials from Sarah Westby from Shepherd Goodwin. There was a presentation in terms of, you know, where, where were the decision points? Um, the document that I shared with you from, um, Norfolk is one that I wanna, wanna focus on. And I, in having conversations with some of you individually, as well as some recalling some of the conversations we had here as a group, um, I think Charles once had said, you know, it's almost a foregone conclusion. Let's put the guardrails around it. If we're gonna do it, let's put guardrails around it. Uh, and this is not a foregone conclusion that we're, we're going to do it, but this, these are the things that we need to contemplate as we move towards a finalization on the issue, because we've done a pretty good job of kicking it down the road for a while now. Uh, and, um, so.
Yeah, it's easy to back up. You can't put higher restrictions on it.
But that, that's kinda why I wanted to use the ordinance, and I think you've, you've heard me talk about this, you know, ad nauseam, that, um, I, I believe social engineering should be done through the zoning code, should be done through ordinance. Um, the zoning code will say, okay, where and, you know, how many or, or that. So, um, I.
Remember you had the maps and the circles and the one mile and two mile in the schools and that type of thing. Yes. What was the, the least and the most?
Well, a mi- a mile basically didn't, didn't leave us anywhere to put it in town.
And that's what Litchfield is, is a mile.
A half a mile basically doesn't allow you to do Soundview. It allows you to do, uh, well, if, if you keep out of residential areas, uh, the east end of Route One is completely, uh, inaccessible. And you're basically sticking it out on the west. That's, yeah, yeah, ha- half a mile, you know, half a mile barely gets you, uh, to those areas. So. But in, in the conversations I've been having with Pete as well as with, uh, with Jamie Stein, uh, and we can play with those, those circles easily. It doesn't have to be a half a mile. It could be a thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet. You know, we, does, you know, those are some of the, the parameters that exist today. You know, fifteen hundred feet from places of worship, schools or from each other on alcohol licenses. Uh, so would we wanna mirror what we've done with alcohol? Mitch is shaking his head because he just went through this in orange and it was a, a significant challenge, but they, uh, they, they were at the point where they were approving it because they didn't have a moratorium, my mistake.
No, they, they lifted, the moratorium expired. They, they actually lifted the moratorium to proof.
And to your point, we, you know, we can't keep kicking. But, you know, I, I do, I, I still personally believe that we gotta make it highly restrictive. You know, if it goes forward, it's highly restrictive to see what develops.
Yeah, just to go now, I, I went through it with adult stuff in P and Z twenty years ago. So to, to that point, let me, let me just throw out some things, some, some, some stakes to the ground, right? And we had talked about some of this. Would we consider limiting the number of establishments, particularly as it relates to, um, retail sales? Okay? And which would be on that Norfolk document, uh, items one, two and three. Uh, and then on the others, hopefully microcultivator producer, do we treat those as this document says, as manufacturing? Uh, and do we, do we restrict those facilities as well? Um, do we, uh, establish like the alcohol ordinances, a distance from each other? Do we establish like alcohol, a distance from schools and churches? Although we can all pretty much assume that that is blown out of the water because St. George is around the corner from, uh, Frank's and Bob's. Oh, Bob's Bottle Bar, whatever it's called now, and I should know, Freddie, Freddie would kill me for not knowing that, but, uh, distance from schools, alright? Um, would you, would you, would you contemplate not in the greater downtown area, which is a, a definition that needs to be fleshed out, right? Um, we, you know, I, I would dare say we probably don't want, uh, you know, a dispensary on Whitfield Street, uh, across from the green, right? Um, do we restrict the days that, uh, the number of days that can be opened, alright? Is it, you know, the old blue laws where you kept it closed on the, on the Sabbath, right? Uh, well, the state did that up, so it's seven days. But would you wanna consider limiting the hours of operation? Um, I, I don't know if I forwarded the most recent thing from Sarah Westby the other day. I might not, I did, good. Um, at least I remember it.
Well, you forwarded something from Sarah Westby. Maybe there's another one you didn't, but you definitely had one.
Um, and this was relative to, uh, the, the hours of operation. I think the state is ten, nine AM to ten PM. Uh, and there are other places, uh, that have, when they approve it, they've restricted it, so it was closer to the alcohol ordinance or even more restrictive. I had the opportunity last week to go over to the, um, the facility in Bramford, RISE, which is, uh, you know, out on the there eastern end of Route One, uh, which was originally a medical dispensary and now it is a, uh, medical and adult use. And I'm getting better at not using the word Rick doesn't want us to say, uh, recreational. And I was very impressed, and as was Moore, although Moore is, uh, you know, still not convinced that we should have it here in town, but very convinced with the process, the security, um, and, and, and just the way that the whole thing operated. You know, it's not like some of those scenes you see, those head shops in some of those small towns in Massachusetts. Um, there's no, there's, there's no, there's no use on the facility or the premise.
Back close to one of the restrictions, I don't know if I read it in Norfolk or Litchfield, where they can only sell, can only be, they can't, but they can't, it can't be in a convenience store, yeah, they're one product only. And that make, would make it easier to regulate it, too. You don't have to worry about people in there buying that.
I miss the, uh, one in Bramford, because I'd like to go by and see it.
It's across from the motel.
Just for a friend.
No, I miss people friends.
Old Harbor Bank. Petco.
The cross from Ferris Elles, is it Ferris Elles?
Oh, Pets. Okay, so then I've driven by it a thousand times and not even noticed it, I guess.
There's a brewery over there that you might open.
I know where that is.
You're in the neighborhood.
Oh, Planet Fitness.
Yeah.
Yeah, I may have been there, okay.
The other thing, uh, I'd like, I didn't even, I hadn't even thought of, uh, a business of the delivery service and transfer. I did like the idea that they weren't allowed to store anything, although I'm trying to.
I'm not sure how they wouldn't function that way.
Yeah, how could you deliver something if you don't have it? I, I, you know, I, I.
I was trying.
More restrictions, the better.
Well, I think you could set up.
But I hadn't even thought of that business.
So you can run your administrative operation out of your home.
Right, just can't have the product on site. You're also.
Yeah, so you could be registered your business at home, you know, but you still need some sort of delivery location.
Or could have it in the vehicle.
These are Uber drivers. This is what this is like, very much similar to like Uber and.
I hadn't even thought of that part of the business.
So, a general question, are we no longer considering having some kind of a public hearing about the concept?
Oh, no, no, I, we, well, we've, we've, no, you're right. We haven't had, uh, an actual sit-down, right?
I, I would like to do that. I thought we were sort of all in agreement at the beginning. Um, we've had the survey in which, to my way of thinking, is not, not inadequate. That does not inform us, I don't think.
And you said, no, I have said no.
That's a good idea.
Right, you know, the only thing we will need to do is that the ordinances do expire the end of April, so if we want, need to extend it another time, uh, we certainly can. Uh, but I think we need to be prepared to go and have the kind of discussions with them. These are the things we're contemplating. And this is, I think this is a critical phase. If we're going to do this, these are the kind of guardrails that we have put around it. Um, and, 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 you know, in, in terms of, you know, mitigating some of the concerns that some folks will have. So.
But that's about a question I've heard, I mean, you know, but you said, if we're going to have it, then we go to this kind of stuff.
Okay, I, I looked today, and this probably was on the table here before, but it is, just wanna make sure I understand this is where things stand. In addition to the six and a third percent income ta- uh, sales tax, which the state, you got the municipality has a three percent override. And then there's like another ten percent sort of excise tax, so I don't know where that goes, but that's not here. The, the, the town's financial interest is three percent.
Yeah, and, and to, and to assume that the financial interest is the rationale to move forward with allowing it is a fool's, a fool's idea.
I'm just saying, that question has come up repeatedly, just so that it's out there.
Well, I mean, that's the only, it's one of the driving factors of Hartford was, you know, the dollars and cents gain here.
Well, Hartford is doing, is aggregating the entire state at least, but.
And that's meaningless without knowing the, the amount, the, the base that the tax is gonna be placed on. You know, we don't have any way of estimating what the revenues are. We don't have any clue. That would be, it could be nothing.
Yeah, and again, we, we don't know exactly what the, the market demand is. The cost of entry to open up one of these facilities is significant. And you also need to have a minority partner, uh, which traditionally probably isn't hard to, to find, folks willing to participate. But the amount of money that was, uh, that I saw invested just in security over at the, the RISE facility suggests that it's not gonna be at a gas station. And the, and the bifurcation of storage, uh, preparation, uh, the, the requirements. If anyone's interested, I'd be happy to, uh, reach out to the folks over at RISE to have, uh, you know, folks to take a look at it.
Look at their website before it's impressive, actually. You know, there, that's a professional, at least the website. It puts some effort into it.
Okay, um, so, uh, again, I'd ask that, uh, folks start to think about some of the points I just brought up. What, if we were to do this, what kind of controls, and, you know, as, as it's laid out here, um, I, I think the Norfolk one is really well done because it, and it stipulates, you know, what zones it can occur in, where, where it can occur. As you can see, in residential, uh, zones, nothing is allowed.
Do you think we're at a point where we could set a public hearing date? I mean, just to get the first.
We could, I think we could set a public hearing date just for discussion purposes and maybe a straw man on, uh, uh, some regulations, um, if we were.
Yeah, I mean, this is funny, I mean, I'd, I'd like to hear it from the public.
It would almost be helpful to say, if these regulations in place, what would the reaction be? I mean, I don't know if that's a proper way to run a public hearing, but it seems like it'd be helpful, because I had the same reaction too. I suspect why you gave it to us. I mean, with Norfolk.
I think the first question is, what is the general public attitude towards doing this? And then if it's, yes, you should try it, then we go to the regulation.
Well, we are, we already have some, some evidence of, uh, community, uh, response and engagement, but through the first, for the first poll that we did.
This is funny, it go off.
Uh, and it is the law, but, um, it's not federal law. And, you know, it's, it's still not federal law, uh, although I understand the banking stuff is getting a little easier to work around, clearinghouses, uh, so.
Yeah, everybody said banking.
Yeah, and, and, and some of the fears that these were gonna be, you know, piles of cash sitting around in the back room of a, a.
Well, it's technically illegal. They have, every transaction's gotta be reported, right, last night.
Okay, um, well, thank you. And, uh, what, what I'll do is, uh, I'll take a, I'll take, uh, an opportunity to, the parameters that I just mentioned to you sound reasonable to put in a document for, for contemplation at, at, in, in sharing with the community if we're gonna do it.
Uh, yes, but I would like to ask the question first, you know, or, or pose it that, you know, if we wanna go forward, these are the types of things we could consider.
Right. That's exactly, exactly, exactly the way I wanna frame it. And we can play with the, uh, the numbers from distance of the schools. Um, I'd be happy to share with you once again that, you know, if you can look at it after the meeting.
Start large circles, always be able to back down.
Yeah, well, a mile, a mile basically precludes it from happening in town. Half a mile.
Well, I just, I'm Litchfield and I said.
Um, and then we'll, we'll, we, Jamie and I have been talking about a couple of other things. Like I said, how do we draw a circle around the greater downtown area? How do we define the greater downtown area? Uh, is that, you know, is that, is that a half a mile from the center of the green? Does that, does that cover us, right? Uh, or does that, you know, does that allow it? It probably doesn't. Maybe a half a mile, would we be outside of Cox School if we were at the, you know, Strawberry Hill? Someone wanted to put a shop in Strawberry Hill, so. Um, but at some point, once we define those areas or determine what areas that we would like, planning is owning, with some recommendations and everything.
Yeah, I, I would think a half mile would leave some areas, you know, whether it be, I mean, granted, it's gotta be a commercial district, but still, I mean, Cox in that direction, so that leaves a lot of Route One over there, seventy-seven.
Okay, yeah. Well, I remember you got the high school comes in.
Do we set a date or, you wanna come back next?
Why, why, why don't I have, why don't I work with Pete, pull together some kind of, uh, uh, some kind of document, uh, in terms of what we would recommend, uh, around the, the safeguards, if you would. Are we comfortable, it's a straw man, are we comfortable with two or one, uh, you know, one retail establishment? Is there any comfort around, uh, limiting the manufacturing? Um, is, you know, what, what, what are your thoughts around that? And manufacturing really is, uh, items four through nine on that Norfolk, uh, document.
I see that as less of a problem oddly. Now, maybe I'm missing problems, but I mean, in some enclosed warehouse, because it has to be enclosed as a call.
Yeah.
In an, an industrial park, I mean, you'd be mopping up, you know, square footage that would be of advantage to that.
Yeah, the impact on the public bear is dropped.
Yeah, and it's just, it's just.
So that, you know, it's the retail.
So, I mean, I'm less, I'm less concerned about that. I don't know, but I'd be interested to know if there is some, I keep looking up pros and cons. There's gotta be, I'm sure somebody somewhere has a concern with the, with the manufacturing side. And I'll be all ears to understand it, but I can't see it yet.
And the scale to, to effectively do cultivation? I'm not sure it exists here in this town. Where would you, where would you put a facility, you know, so?
Well, that woman came, remember she was, she came within a month of it being passed and was ready to do it on Soundview. And she had some statistics.
She was a micro, that was a micro.
Yeah, so.
Anyway, so, so it turns us around. I'll, I'll make some decisions relative to this and I'll share it with you. And as soon as Pete and I have a document, if, uh, I'll share it. If folks wanna narrow it down or, or, or widen it, we'd be happy to do so. And then we'll, uh, put together a, uh, a public hearing on the overall question of, uh, of allowing, uh, retail sales and/or production here in town.
My, um, you know, your question about just limiting to one, just picking a number seems sort of random. I know your earlier comment about not using zoning to limit activity is valid and that makes a ton of sense, but in this case, it's probably an appropriate way to do it because the issue is not so much the nature of the business, it's where that business would be and it's you, just by virtue of having, as we've already said, a half-mile radius, you're really choking down the number of possible spots. Now that, maybe we find out that people are creative, they can shoehorn in half a dozen, um, in that, those, those wedges, I think, in centric circles, I don't know.
And you have to remember, I mean, whatever we do within a community, the person that wants it, it isn't gonna matter because they can go an extra half a mile, Bramford give them.
Right.
I mean, all of this, we're spending a lot of time worrying about it, but the reality to a user doesn't exist.
Fair, fair enough. But I, I, it does occur to me that there are people, and we've heard from some of them already, who are passionately in favor of this and they wanna operate a business. And I don't wanna just completely squash that either. I keep trying to balance that piece against my sort of instinct to be cautious. So that's what I'm struggling with.
Right. So, uh, I'll make a set of assumptions and work with Pete, uh, around some parameters. Then we'll start looking at dates. There's, uh, for, uh, public hearing, uh, on this topic, uh, so.
Evening dates.
Yes, oh yeah, it's gotta be.
Yeah. Alright, anything further? Thank you. Thank you. Alright, um, item nine, consider and take possible action to set a public hearing date of April third, twenty twenty-two.
We want it to be twenty twenty-three, right?
Yeah, it is twenty twenty-three, that's right. Uh, Karen told me to look out for that and I missed it.
That's alright.
Um, at the town hall via Zoom, and via Zoom under ordinance to amend the co- the code of the town of Guilford, chapter eighty-eight, pensions and other post-employment benefits. Mitch, a couple of minutes on that, please?
Sure. First thing you wanna do, I think, and Pete, Barrett's on there, somewhere? Yeah, Pete's there.
I'm here.
The first, first thing I'll do is, is to, uh, it should be a motion to change the item on the agenda.
I don't know if it, I don't know if it made it, uh, I've got, I've got the, a revised one that beat the, um, supplied moments before we started.
Exactly, because it's actually encompassing two different sections there. Do you want me to read it? Do you have that?
Uh, I've got it. So it's been replaced by consider and take possible action to set a public hearing date of April third, twenty twenty-three. Call myself. Eight thirty AM at the town hall in Viazuma, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, section nine. Call me so, eight thirty a.m. at the town hall in Viazuma, an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, section nine twenty-two, pension committee and section eighty-eight dash two, current and prospective plans repeal of prior provisions. Okay.
All right, so you need to pass that change to the agenda first. Uh, the motion to make that change, right, Pete?
That's a motion to, a motion to amend the agenda, item nine.
Make the motion.
Anything further on that? Let me try your minds, is there any amendment? All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
All right, is there a motion to consider take possible action, what I just read? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so the, the discussion is as follows, um, the, um, the pension committee in its, in its, uh, current configuration, um, has overseen the pen, the three pension plans we have, you're all familiar with that, the town, the police, and the, um, board of ed, non-certified. And, um, now we've looking at, um, having them also oversee the, the four oh one defined contribution plan as well as the voluntary four fifty-seven plans that, um, exist for town employees. And the reason for this is twofold. One is because there's a recent Supreme Court decision that says that the employer could be responsible for, for making sure that employees in these voluntary plans or even in the fine contribution plan is, has been given the proper mechanisms for investment so that they're not being charged excessive fees and also that they are given, um, uh, investment choices that are, are, are appropriate for someone looking for a retirement fund. I am perfectly confident that the three places we're using right now are doing exactly that. However, this gives the pension committee additional oversight opportunity to actually engage or hire an outside consultant to do exactly that, to, to look at them and make sure that our employees are being given the right information, that they're not being charged excessive fees, and that their investments are proper for a retirement, uh, situation. So that's really what this comes down to. The rest is, is just the, the verbiage. Pete's on the phone there, Pete, have I missed something? Want to add anything?
No.
There he is.
Nope, you got it.
Okay, the question, actually, I just leave for questions at this point. And this has to go to a public hearing because it's a change to the ordinance, um, and the public hearing has been proposed for April third, twenty twenty-three, which is a regular meeting of, you know, right, right at the beginning of your regular meeting that, that, that morning. So. Any, any questions?
The genesis of this was a couple of Supreme Court cases.
Supreme Court cases, um, there's also, we found out when we looked into this, we were looking into this for several months, that there are other towns that have done this already, whether it was the, whether it was being pushed by the, um, Supreme Court or just, um, just by the fact that, you know, it's a retirement plan, and who's overseeing it? Technically, right now, I am, but I'm really not the expert, number one. Number two, I'm not watching it. You know, I'm, I'm helping people, you know, to, to fill out the paperwork and, and to get involved and to call our advisor if they have any questions, uh, there, you know, our broker. But we really, this gives us the opportunity to, uh, have some, some body, in this case, it'd be the pension committee, to, um, to admit, help administer those plans and the oversight.
So, so the readers digest.
Pension committee is, excuse me, Pete, we asked you, Sue, the pension committee has been apprised of this and is, is ready to take it on, that without, without fail, Bob. Pete, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, so, so the short version of this is, is that, uh, there's some potential liability associated with being a fiduciary of these plans, uh, particularly with respect to, you know, there are limited choices for investments under these plans. In other words, you can't, if you're participating, you can't just do anything you want. You have to select from, you know, the options available. So, there's, there's an implied duty as a fiduciary to make sure those are, you know, up to date, current, um, attractive or, or good faith, uh, uh, investment vehicles, so that if one is really terrible, you, you have an obligation to remove it. And so that's where the potential liability is.
Thank you, and just as it, as coincidental more than anything, I happen to serve on the Orange, the town of Orange, uh, uh, pension committee. And we've done this, um, the last couple of years now, and before Supreme Court, and just recently changed out our supplier because the fees that were being charged by the, by the four oh three B plan, we don't have one of those here, but very similar, uh, we found to be much higher than the competition by going out and just putting out a proposal and seeing what it was. And so, it's, it's, it's not an easy thing to do to transfer over from one plan to another, it's disruptive to the employees, but the employees are being shown how, how their take home of this will be, will be better because their fees are going to be reduced significantly. So, but we don't know if that'll happen here, but at least we'll have the, the opportunity for someone to actually make that, uh, proposal to us.
So this is going to require an investment on part of the town, unlike the,
It will.
unlike the pension committee, when we have pension advisors, those come out of the proceeds, uh, of the, the pension fund. This will be, uh, an additional cost to the town to, uh, hire someone to do that kind of analysis because, like, the, the pension committee is not going to be doing that analysis.
That's right, and that's a great point, and, and one reason it's not ever been contemplated is because we do any kind of, like, our actuarial studies are paid for out of the plan. You know, so it's, it's like, you know, it's coming from our investments that we eventually have to pay our employees when they retire anyway. In this case, it is going to be, um, a separate item that the town's going to pay because there is no, um, you know, pot of funds there that, that the town is managing because they're all in the employees' own individual accounts in a defined contribution plan. We don't, we don't have a big investment. In the pension plan, we have right now over seventy million dollars that we are, that the pension committee watches over with help of our consultants, uh, with the defined contribution plans, you know, it's all in individual accounts. There is no, oh, yeah, oversight or group, you know, uh, pool of money to choose to take it from there.
Anything further? Got it, nope, got a motion on the floor, um, let me try your minds, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries.
See, April, April third for the public hearing. Thank you.
And we can finally put this to bed, this has only been kicking around for.
Several months. Thank you.
That'll be at eight thirty, the same day we're having.
Yeah. Thank you.
Glacial patient. Okay, item ten, appointments and resignations, uh, ten dot one, move from the table and take possible action on the reappointment of Kelly Streeter to the historic district commission for a term to expire on January thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, remove from the table.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor? Uh, that motion carries now, the motion itself would be, uh, to, uh, reappoint Kelly Streeter to the historic district commission for a term to expire on January thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
And Sue, uh, you got the backup materials, uh, as, as I can, if you like, so.
And thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
It was an actual hoop, but it's very helpful to see it, and it's, it's encouraging.
It's, it's very helpful.
Good, all right, motion on the floor, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Ten dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint Pasquale de Longo as an alternate on the Harvard management commission for a term to expire on July thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. Is there a motion?
Oh.
And a second? Second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That motion carries unanimously. Uh, ten dot three, act on a recommendation to appoint Ben Robinson to the sustainable Guilford task force, I'd like to make that recommendation. And that motion, you'll second it. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Um, ten dot four, act on a recommendation to appoint Christine Macaluso to the sustainable Guilford task force. Is there, is there a motion?
Several.
And a second?
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion, that motion carries unanimously. Um, okay, request for use of town property, eleven, uh, dot one, act on a request from We Are One Inc. Green on May nineteenth or twentieth for an anti-human trafficking shoreline community block party. Are you, you are, okay, you're Ashley?
Yes, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to speak in the beginning or.
Yeah, uh, okay, Ashley is, yeah, come on up for a second, uh, because we're going to have to go through a couple of things on this.
I want some information.
Um, I, I think the information that you have provided to us is, uh, is, is exceptional, uh, these documents, right? Uh, did everybody get this on?
I have a supplementary fact sheet.
Oh, wonderful, thank you, thank you. Again, we probably could have avoided you having to drive all the way down here, but, um, and I, I apologize for.
That's okay, my daughter has a, I have a dance meeting at the studio at Guilford Center, that new dance studio, so it worked out perfect.
Great, well, Ashley, uh, thanks very much, I, uh, this looks like a, a very, very good event. Uh, anti-human trafficking, and, uh, there's no question that it's still a problem in this world. And probably one that we don't understand is still a problem in Connecticut or even in, in our, in our own communities. So, um, the, the application looks, looks wonderful. Um, one of, there is a challenge here.
Okay.
Uh, our policy states Guilford nonprofit organizations.
I saw that, yeah.
You saw it, so I have already made at least one outreach call, I have two, I made two calls, uh, one of which, um, I got, I was able to leave a message the other day, a message, but to some Guilford nonprofits who might be willing to sponsor you.
Okay, so it'd be like a partnership?
A partnership.
Okay, great.
Uh, that would, uh, that would accomplish the goal of being able to do it, it would, it would protect us not violating our policy, uh, which we have used to, to turn folks down in the past, not because we believed their program was appropriate, but it's just the way we, we.
Nice.
Yeah, I, I, I'd see it hard for us to, to say no to something like this.
Could you tell me the, the ones you reached out to, or should I wait and?
Let me do that privately.
Okay.
Do online, do online. What's that, in case they say?
No, no, that's exactly.
And, and there, and quite honestly, there are the usual suspects, uh, I don't think you're going to have a problem finding someone to do that.
Yes.
So, Ashley, uh, we're going to table this
Okay.
uh, for, uh, uh, two weeks, uh, till our next meeting.
Okay, okay, as far as, um, because I'm just working on sponsorships right now, can I use the language I'm planning on having?
I'm hoping to.
Hoping, okay, I'm hoping, that's, that's okay.
Have you, uh, had one of these events before?
This will be our very first, so this, we want to do a semi-annual.
Five hundred to a thousand is your estimate?
It's an estimate from committed groups of people that, that would, we have a roller, roller derby female team that, that's planning on coming and playing the dodgeball tournament, uh, my co-founder is a realtor, uh, with, well, um.
Is that over the two days, or you think at any given point?
I think it's over the two days, I think it's going to come in waves, um, because we're going to have a program.
Yeah, it's good size.
Is that good?
Not as big as a concert, but, um.
A big event.
That'd be fine, that'd be fine.
Okay.
And, and I know you, you, you talked about which areas are the green, five of the sections.
Yeah, so along the Whitfield side, so it'll kind of stay all organized and well-run and, and managed, yeah.
I was trying to figure out in historic downtown Guilford, we booked our event at a locally owned and operated shake shop.
So that was an old document, it started at, so it evolved, actually. It started at Evolve, Evolve was one of my first supporters when I was doing guerrilla marketing for my nonprofit, and she's like, why don't we do an event? Um, and then as I started networking with other businesses and Paige Harder, they're like, go to the green, you should have it go across the street, fill out the paperwork.
Where was the locally owned and operated?
Evolve Nutrition, um, right next to, kind of next to Paige, Paige's and the old fire department.
Shake shop.
The shake shop.
It's a hairdresser, no.
It's a shake shop, it's like, yeah, it's a nutrition shake shop.
Going down Whitfield Street on the left inside.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it was going to be there because we imagined it being smaller, and then as, as I started networking and seeing how much support there was and more grant opportunities, I was like, we, you're going to need a bigger space and more, more awareness than.
Right, quite a need to be a boat.
Yes.
Okay, well, Ashley applaud you for your efforts on, uh, on tackling this kind of issue, uh, and, you know, uh, what is it, uh, think globally, act locally, so, uh, thank you. Quite honestly, uh, in, in the past, there have been, I've, I've had some conversations with our, uh, chief police, polices around some trafficking that potentially happens in, uh, in stores, uh, locally, so. Leave it, I'll leave it in.
Yes. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Ashley, thank you very much.
So two weeks then, right?
Yep, and you'd be, uh, I'll tell you what, by the time, if, if you, if you were going to wind up with, if you have a sponsor, uh, you don't need to come back because I think, well, this will pretty much approve this, if I'm not mistaken. You know, we get, somebody, somebody would figure it out, sponsor would show up or somewhere, yeah, we'll silence.
We'll work.
I enjoy the meetings, I go to the Branford ones too, so I, I, I enjoy public meetings, it's one of my favorite things.
We, we'll work behind the scenes.
Okay.
Did we get eight, did we once?
You did, you know what, the energy was very good as soon as I walked in, which is unusual.
This is a good group.
Yes.
We even met her in the morning.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, eleven dot two, act on a request from, uh, O L M, or Lady of Mercy, to place a sign on the green advertising. It's open house taking place on March twelve, twenty twenty-three, I'll make that motion in your side. And let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries unanimously. Committee reports, Sandy, you sort of gave one earlier.
I sort of gave one.
Earlier, right?
I'm good.
Correspondence, uh, public works report or building report, anything that anyone wants to comment on or, um, of note? I, uh, I, I do like Dave's, uh, monthly report, uh, it's a little different than it used to be, but very helpful, yep. Um, okay.
I thought there was an interesting, how many, I mean, we are, we're at twenty already for building permits.
Right, yep.
Interesting year.
Yes, so, um, yeah, it was a better two and a half, uh, yeah, so we'll be up around thirty again. And then, you know, the question is, you know, there, there are a couple of developments that are, that are starting. Biglyadis up along, uh, uh, Long Hill, Long Hill. Okay, um, anybody under old business? New business? Um, I'm going to do this because executive session is at the end, so public forum, uh, at this point, uh, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? On the, uh, uh, on the Zoom call, I, I see there, uh, a couple of folks, anyone wishing to?
I can talk now, but I was going to talk to you guys after.
Oh, public forum.
Hello, uh, I would if, if I'm still able to.
I read, I read this as Michael Scadrin, uh, I know you had reached out about trying to.
Everyone able to hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Yes, we do.
Great, um, here, I'll turn my video on as well. My name is Michael Scadrin, um, I am a real estate professional who works with Slap Consulting or Slap Ash LLC. We are a consulting firm that works with cannabis companies throughout the country. Um, a little background on me, I actually did real estate work for Cure Leaf and then Green Thumb Industries, helping find all of their locations throughout the country and then working through land use and entitlements, um, to get those stores open. You guys had mentioned Rise Branford earlier, uh, that is a Green Thumb Industries location, we actually acquired that, but I was responsible for the renovations and then reopening once, um, retail or adult use was approved. And the reason I'm reaching out today is I wanted to both introduce myself and my team. Um, in addition to, uh, working with these groups to find their locations and get them approved, my partner Amanda, who's from Glastonbury, recently won two of the licenses for retail in Connecticut. And so we're in the midst of working through where we can put these locations. Um, we have a number of sites already locked up, and we've been working with Jamie Stein in planning, and I've also sent a deck to your office, Selectman Hoy. Um, kind of going into more detail on the items that I'm about to, to touch on. So, what I really wanted to do is just give a high-level overview, it seems, it sounds like you guys are going to have a larger meeting in a couple of weeks, so we would love to present at that as well. Um, but just wanted to kind of give a high-level overview on the use, um, to hopefully maybe give a little bit more context.
Right, uh, Michael, just try to keep it to three minutes, that's our public forum.
Yeah, got it. So, real quick, um, when it comes to three items of concern, one's crime and security, just, I, we can provide more information, it's in that deck I sent you, but typically crime either stays the same or decreases when we come to town. Uh, the security related to our use actually helps to reduce crime in the area. So that's common misconception that we like to just kind of get out of the way off the bat. Second, traffic in the area of one of our sites, um, on a four thousand square foot site for a coffee shop or a fast food, they actually have more trips, we have about seventy-five trips an hour. Um, those uses actually have more than us, so we consider us a, a less trafficked use than a lot of the other commercial or retail uses in the area. When it comes to revenue, you guys, um, already talked about the three percent tax rate. We actually would estimate a store, um, in the area that we're going to propose to do about ten million dollars a year in revenue, so that would yield about three hundred thousand dollars to the city of Guilford. The items that I really wanted to just hit on very quickly pertain to zoning, setback requirements, and the overall cap, basically what you guys were talking about earlier. I know you had discussed a possible half mile, um, restriction on schools, uh, that's something that we've looked at and really don't. That's something that we've looked at and really don't believe it would allow for the use anywhere. Um, so what we, after looking at other cities that we've worked with throughout the country, but specifically in Connecticut, came to the conclusion that the best zone that we feel would be for this use would be the TS zone along Boston Post Row, just south of the highway on the eastern side of the city. Um, we felt like the proximity to the highway fits some of the results of the survey. I know that you guys didn't have the biggest outcome for that survey, but, you know, wanted to at least use the information from that to identify where we felt the use would best be located. So we felt TS was the best zone. And then from there, when it comes to the setbacks, uh, on average, I at most see cities enacting as setback requirements at around a thousand feet from schools, uh, churches, libraries, parks, sometimes other uses. In the interest of being a little bit more conservative, we considered a fifteen hundred foot setback from those uses when looking at the different zones within Guilford and felt that, again, within the TS zone, that setback really allowed for a couple of sites to work, but overall wouldn't overpopulate with a number of sites. Lastly, comes to the cap. Um, you guys were talking about whether or not you would cap the number of sites within the city. Uh, before adult use came around, the state of Connecticut actually had a cap on dispensaries where you could not have one, you needed to have one dispensary for twenty-five thousand residents. It could not be any more than that. So with, uh, with Guilford having twenty-two thousand residents, I believe, we felt that a cap of one would make the most sense for the use. Now, as I said earlier, we had pre, we sentenced a deck that goes into all this information more, in more detail with memos and data, um, explaining why we came to the conclusions that we came to. I would love the opportunity with my team to present at the, uh, the next meeting for the use specifically. Um, and would be happy to provide my contact info if you guys have any questions going forward.
Michael, thank you very much. Uh, and I can have your contact info, your, uh, email, uh, so I'll probably reach out to you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Well presented, thank you. Uh, anyone else on, uh? Oh. Name and address for the record.
That's right.
My friend.
Rob Therici, two thirty Village Pond Road, uh, project manager at fifty-five Titch Street. So thank you for your time. Um, I came here today to discuss, uh, the preschool options in the town. I went to the Board of Education, uh, the, the budget forum that they had a couple of weeks ago to pitch something similar, but just kind of work the issue at all angles, you know? Fundamentally, in town, as it is really everywhere in the country, childcare and preschool, specifically, I'm talking about preschool, is a capacity issue, right? It's, it's really hard to find affordable childcare, especially affordable good childcare. And with preschool program in particular, our oldest, uh, is in the program right now and program's incredible. Uh, teachers are great. The growth we've seen in him has been just amazing. So like I said, it's really a capacity issue. So anywhere at any given year, you know, there's probably about four hundred to five hundred, three and four-year-olds into town, kind of grouping them together for the sake of this. Guilford Lakes is about seventy to seventy-five right now. I think I, I don't know, I'm sort of patching these numbers, you know, just from my observations. And then there's several private, uh, organizations all over town, um, which are great and we just, okay, our daughter applied to one of those and we're very excited for that. But that still leaves a gap, um, in preschool coverage in town and especially affordable. Now, having Michael in the, the town program is, is very nice just from a affordability standpoint. So I'm just here to sort of, uh, discuss and propose an expansion in some capacity of the preschool program to the other three elementary schools in town. Uh, I don't think it would, it would take a lot in terms of space. Um, the way I sort of envision it is you could do a couple of class, like two classrooms in each building and that could get you a full day and two half-day programs in each building, which is, which would basically double the, no, triple the capacity in town. And that would, it wouldn't wipe out the, uh, private places in town because that would still, you know, like I said, there's still a socky envelope in there. Uh, provides a significant value for parents compared to private options. The important note, of course, that the Guilford Lakes program is currently a special education peer program. A lot of details for something like this, but in my mind, this proposal would keep the special education program concentrated Guilford Lakes. So I think there's a lot of brain trust there. They really know what they're doing, uh, with the other three elementary schools offering a preschool for kids without special needs. So I'd be happy to discuss the issue with anyone further if you'd like, uh, later date, but something that I'm certainly passionate about, so. Came to.
I'm aware of that program. Do participants pay at all?
We do, yes. I'm sure it's a, it's a subsized rate. I don't know where the other,
Right.
largely through special education funding or just general board of education funding. These are things I'm not really sure about, but, it's, it's half the money for like twice the days, basically, is some of the private places. So it's a big deal if you're, you know, young parents, you've got a family with a lot of kids, because I know there's a lot of parents to talk to. If they can't get into that, the private places can be out of reach financially, so that can make it tough. And then the kid, you know, you don't go until kindergarten anyway, so.
It snowballs too because it's a problem now for employers.
Well, of course. All right. I mean, you're talking about, heck, kind of childcare is really a five-year gap you're looking at. Expanding preschool, that's forty percent of your issue right there, right off the top, so.
Rob, thank you for, um, coming and talking to us about it.
Of course.
I had had a conversation about it.
Yeah.
Coming in formalizing it. Just a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
The pre-K programs, that's done by lottery?
Lottery, right now, yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
They had a, a big bounce back year, they said, with admissions this year, where I think it dipped down a little bit with the pandemic, because I'm sure many things like that did. But it's really, it's really back full force this year.
Good. One of the things that, in some of the conversations I've had, um, with, uh, Liza Petra at the Guilford Foundation, relative to the use of ARPA funds was to try to identify emerging needs in this community and see if we could allocate some funds towards alleviating those kind of needs. Um, you know, uh, and, and, you know, talking, we're not talking about enough seed money to buy a building or something, but maybe enough to, to try to enhance or, or to support expansion of daycare programs in, in town, if it's similar to the housing plus fund, right? So, uh, that will be one, that will be a focus of, uh, the, the foundation's efforts as they go through dispensing the ARPA funds that we've already identified for them, to identify an emerging need that has become, uh, uh, more pressing over the past few years. And I think, uh, daycare is a, is a, is a, is a problem nationally. It's a problem statewide. It's a problem locally. There's no question about it. So I'm not sure that, you know, half a million dollar seed from ARPA would do enough to get anything accomplished, but perhaps, uh, you, you know, I, I think I just heard Rob volunteer to lead a task force to see what the real, I'm sorry.
Maybe be on a task. Be on a lead a task force.
Or to do something with the ARPA. Or whatever, I mean, whether it be a trust. Would that come under the auspices of Board of Ed?
It still would. It would, because it's a, you know, pre-K programs all have to be licensed by the office of early childhood.
Because the Board of Ed issue.
I don't think it necessarily would. If it was in the schools like the program we have now is, it would. But there are nonprofit daycares all over town that have nothing, that don't fall under Board of Ed, so I don't think.
Right. And, and, and if the, if there's classroom space, if it's not pre-K, would the Guilford Center for Children have the opportunity to expand their program? They have a finite number of kids they can fit in that school. Would they be, and I know they would be interested in additional space because they know, they know the need is there.
That's what, yeah, I don't know if it's a, what if, sorry, interesting to know the number. I mean, I, I think you're right that it's a very real issue, whether it's workforce issues or family issues or whatever. Be interesting to know whether it's for that.
Oh, we did, we haven't worked together. I think it's worth some conversations with the, uh, with the Board of Ed, uh, as well as, uh, you know.
Look to have the direction if nothing else.
Community leaders, some of the folks who run the, uh, the childcare programs here in town. And I said, you know, I don't mean to just single out Guilford Center for Children. There are other, uh, you know, uh, daycare programs in, in, in town, so I wouldn't necessarily just restrict it.
Right. And not just nonprofit too. I mean, if it's a, if there's a need, it doesn't need to be restricted to nonprofits.
Right.
And the staffing models make it very difficult to pay the teachers enough
Right.
to function based on the number of kids that they can oversee. And so short of somehow subsidizing that at a state, national, local level, it becomes, that's sort of a perpetual problem. That's identifying one fraction of the overall problem, but that is a persistent problem. And I've, you know, I've seen some issues and.
And, and the reality is if we do something with American Rescue Plan Funds, it's seed money because it's not.
Yeah, it doesn't solve the year.
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't.
It's preschool, it's after school too.
Yeah.
I would love those programs where they coordinated with the senior centers. You hear about those programs.
Anyway. Okay. Thanks, Rob. Twenty sixteen? There for a little bit. Thanks, Rob. All right. I think that satisfies public forums. Right? So, uh, I would entertain a motion, uh, to going to the executive session, uh, to discuss and take possible action on appeal uh, for resident in court, so section two forty-seven, one, right, appeal, it's actually programmed.
I'll make the motion. I'll go change the sign on the door.
You've got it, and I'm inviting Linda and Fred Green. All right, is there a motion come out of executive session?
Some moved. Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Um, in executive session, there were no motions made, no actions taken, but as a result of the conversation that we had, um, is there a motion to grant the appeal, uh, for the individual that appeared before us?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further comments, uh, or discussions? Hearing, uh, hearing none, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Second. Second.
Second.
All, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Karen.